Okay.
I will call the regular town council September 12th meeting to order. Mayor Mark Sukup, Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Any amendments to the agenda? No. What next item will be public comment. Anybody signed up?
There is nobody signed up, but I received four written comments. One from Michelle Tucker. Becky Gomez. Christine Landon. And Tiffany Canal, which will be attached to the minutes for this meeting.
Thank you. And I know those were included on the on the stand here, so we've all gotten the chance to read those. Next, we have the consent agenda. Any comments or questions related to the consent agenda?
You know, I actually would like to remove item 4D from the consent agenda.
Okay. We will remove item 4D. Does that get moved to the front end or the back end of the business section?
Typically, that'd be the front end.
The front end, okay. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All right, so the consent agenda consists of approval of the August 22nd special town council meeting minutes, approval of the August 22nd town council meeting minutes, and the August 25th check register. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda for A through 4C.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes unanimously. Next, we'll do mayor and council reports. To start, I was gonna ask Dawn if you could give us a report back. We've had a couple of traffic study reports that have been sent to the council over the last couple of weeks. One relating to River Pass and another related to the area around Bethke. Could you give a summary of what those reports found?
Sure, happy to do that. The we had a an early memo that came out from the consultant that is doing the safety audit of the River Pass and, you know, area. And that safety audit came back with a recommendation of reducing the speed limit on River Pass from forty to thirty-five. That's in process now, and you should see those signs change within the next four days. In addition, you all received the Bethke School Zone Report. And those those recommendations also are are in the process of being implemented. But we're looking forward to discussing that all with you and and getting a an actual date when we can move forward with the recommendations of that report.
Thank you, Dawn. And I'm certainly in favor of any of those reports being shared with anyone that would like to see them, any members of the public. I would like to facilitate actionable feedback from the public whenever we have questions on specific traffic questions or issues, so.
Yeah, I believe the the Bethke report is on the website now, but I'm not 100% sure of that. If it's not, it's going to be there very soon.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any any other reports? All right, with that, we will move on to address business item 4D from the agenda. Resolution 56, series 2023, a resolution approving the fifth amended intergovernmental agreement for the establishment of Larimer Emergency Telephone Authority. Carolyn, if you can speak to that.
Thank you. So the town is already a member of the Larimer Emergency Telephone Authority, or LITA. And this, it's an intergovernmental agreement that involves sharing of resources related to that emergency telephone response. And Jefferson County has asked to become a party to the IGA. It does require, I'm sorry, Jackson County. It does require an amendment because of needing to amend both to make them a party and to add, change the jurisdiction and the boundaries to include Jackson County as well. They are bringing to the table their own funding sources that they are contributing the funds that they already have for some reserve funds, as well as they will be paying their emergency fees to the organization so that the cost to the other party should be nominal of adding Jackson County as a party.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council?
Yeah, and I took the liberty of reading the last available LITA board meeting minutes on this. And I noted that the LITA board recommended approval of this, that it was unanimous. I also know that, I believe, Estes Park in the last couple of days acted on this, and they voted in favor of it. So what this will do is expand the territory that LITA is responsible for, essentially double it. Jackson County is about the same size as Larimer, but only has about 1,200 residents and, I think, less than 1,000 active phone lines. LITA is, or way this is funded, is through the surcharges each month in our telephone bills. So it's like $1.10 a month for every cellphone and something similar to that to landline. Jackson County is is bringing with them some of these reserves and then some of their equipment, which is, I think, nineteen-plus years old. The LITA board partially in asserting that Jackson would self-fund this made mention of a funding promise from Congressman Nagus. Although I'm not sure if that's actually funded. I suppose ultimately, I probably trust LITA to manage their own business here. But one of the things that this does is adds a board position for the Jackson County Sheriff. An individual, you know, with a population of of 1,200, whereas Timneth does not have a board position there, a town population of of 10,000. And so I'm I'm sure there's a question in in here somewhere, but from a Timneth perspective, why would we favor this?
Well, I think it's mostly like an like an emergency intergovernmental agreement where you agreed to provide, you know, emergency aid to another government. So I think the main reason is to be able to support another partner for Jackson County. And other than, you know, maybe one of your residents will be in Jackson County, but but, you know, other than needing to call 911 from Jackson County, I think that the assumption is just that this increases and provides public good to everyone and that the additional costs is, you know, LITA has determined that they're able to fund the additional costs. That it's not going to cause a big impact on the other members and provides LITA is able to have more purchasing power, has more knowledge, and is able to provide a lot of benefits to Jackson County.
As I as I'm analyzing this, I can definitely see why it benefits Jackson County. And I'd also note that Jackson County and Larimer County comprise a joint judicial district, and so there are some ties there. I think ultimately, it's probably the right thing to do to to approve this, but you know, I think that this really does benefit Jackson and I believe that the Larimer County LITA folks will probably end up supplementing some of what happens in Jackson County as a result of having them come on board with this.
I was gonna ask, do any town staff participate in board meetings or is there ongoing communication with LITA to represent the town needs?
No. Our involvement with LITA is very minimal.
All right, if there's no more questions, I will see if we have a motion on Resolution Number 56, series 2023, a resolution approving the fifth amended intergovernmental agreement for the establishment of Larimer Emergency Telephone Authority.
I will call the regular Town Council September 12th meeting to order. Mayor Mark Sukup, Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Any amendments to the agenda? No. What next item will be public comment. Anybody signed up?
There is nobody signed up, but I received four written comments. One from Michelle Tucker. Becky Gomez. Christine Landon. And Tiffany Canal, which will be attached to the minutes for this meeting.
Thank you. And I know those were included on the on the stand here, so we've all gotten the chance to read those. Next, we have the consent agenda. Any comments or questions related to the consent agenda?
You know, I actually would like to remove item 4D from the consent agenda.
Okay. We will remove item 4D. Does that get moved to the front end or the back end of the business section?
Typically, that'd be the front end.
The front end, okay. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All right, so the consent agenda consists of approval of the August 22nd Special Town Council Meeting Minutes, approval of the August 22nd Town Council Meeting Minutes, and the August 25th check register. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda for A through 4C.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes unanimously. Next, we'll do mayor and council reports. To start, I was gonna ask Dawn if you could give us a report back. We've had a couple of traffic study reports that have been sent to the council over the last couple of weeks. One relating to River Pass and another related to the area around Bethke. Could you give a summary of what those reports found?
Sure, happy to do that. The we had a an early memo that came out from the consultant that is doing the safety audit of the River Pass and, you know, area. And that safety audit came back with a recommendation of reducing the speed limit on River Pass from 40 to 35. That's in process now, and you should see those signs change within the next four days. In addition, you all received the Bethke School Zone Report. And those those recommendations also are are in the process of being implemented. But we're looking forward to discussing that all with you and and getting a an actual date when we can move forward with the recommendations of that report.
Thank you, Dawn. And I'm certainly in favor of any of those reports being shared with anyone that would like to see them, any members of the public. I would like to facilitate actionable feedback from the public whenever we have questions on specific traffic questions or issues, so.
Yeah, I believe the the Bethke report is on the website now, but I'm not 100% sure of that. If it's not, it's going to be there very soon.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, any any other reports? All right, with that, we will move on to address business item 4D from the agenda. Resolution 56, series 2023, a resolution approving the fifth amended intergovernmental agreement for the establishment of Larimer Emergency Telephone Authority. Carolyn, if you can speak to that.
Thank you. So the town is already a member of the Larimer Emergency Telephone Authority, or LITA. And this, it's an intergovernmental agreement that involves sharing of resources related to that emergency telephone response. And Jefferson County has asked to become a party to the IGA. It does require, I'm sorry, Jackson County. It does require an amendment because of needing to amend both to make them a party and to add, change the jurisdiction and the boundaries to include Jackson County as well. They are bringing to the table their own funding sources that they are contributing the funds that they already have for some reserve funds, as well as they will be paying their emergency fees to the organization so that the cost to the other party should be nominal of adding Jackson County as a party.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council?
Yeah, and I took the liberty of reading the last available LITA board meeting minutes on this. And I noted that the LITA board recommended approval of this, that it was unanimous. I also know that, I believe, Estes Park in the last couple of days acted on this, and they voted in favor of it. So what this will do is expand the territory that LITA is responsible for, essentially double it. Jackson County is about same size as Larimer, but only has about 1,200 residents and I think less than 1,000 active phone lines. LITA is, or the way this is funded is through the surcharges each month in our telephone bills. So it's like $1.10 a month for every cell phone and something similar to that to landline. Jackson County is is bringing with them some of these reserves and then some of their equipment, which is, I think, 19-plus years old. The LITA board partially in asserting that Jackson would self-fund this made mention of a funding promise from Congressman Nagus. Although I'm not sure if that's actually funded. I suppose ultimately, I probably trust LITA to manage their own business here. But one of the things that this does is adds a board position for the Jackson County Sheriff, an individual, you know, with a population of of 1,200, whereas Timneth does not have a board position there, a town population of of 10,000. And so I'm I'm sure there's a question in in here somewhere, but from a Timneth perspective, why would we favor this?
Well, I think it's mostly like an like an emergency intergovernmental agreement where you agreed to provide, you know, emergency aid to another government. So I think the main reason is to be able to support another partner for Jackson County. And other than, you know, maybe one of your residents will be in Jackson County, but but, you know, other than needing to call 911 from Jackson County, I think that the assumption is just that this increases, it provides public good to everyone, and that the additional costs is, you know, LITA has determined that they're able to fund the additional costs, that it's not going to cause a big impact on the other members and provides LITA is able to have more purchasing power, has more knowledge, and is able to provide a lot of benefits to Jackson County.
As I as I'm analyzing this, I can definitely see why it benefits Jackson County. And I'd also note that Jackson County and Larimer County comprise a joint judicial district, and so there are some ties there. I think ultimately, it's probably the right thing to do to to approve this, but you know, I I think that this really does benefit Jackson and I believe that the Larimer County LITA folks will probably end up supplementing some of what happens in Jackson County as a result of having them come on board with this.
I was gonna ask, do any town staff participate in board meetings? Or is there ongoing communication with LITA to represent the town needs?
No. Our involvement with LITA is very minimal.
All right, if there's no more questions, I will see if we have a motion on Resolution Number 56, Series 2023, a resolution approving the fifth amended intergovernmental agreement for the establishment of Larimer Emergency Telephone Authority.
I move I move to approve Resolution Number 56, Series 2023, a resolution approving the fifth amended intergovernmental agreement for the establishment of Larimer Emergency Telephone Authority.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion or debate on the topic? With that, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Vote passes unanimously. Next business item 6A, ordinance number 15, Series 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 and 6 of the Town of Timneth Municipal Code. Lisa.
Good evening. This ordinance amends our code to align with some state legislation legislative changes. One, the state of Colorado passed a law that prohibits the collection of a licensing fee for businesses that don't physically reside within the jurisdiction. So we've modified our code to align with that and created a remote business license fee with a $0 fee, and then the general business license fee of $50 for businesses that have a physical presence within the town. In addition, the state of Colorado passed a law that requires a 10-cent bag fee for retailers, and 50% of that is to be shared back with the municipalities. So we just aligned our code that allows the retailers to remit that with their quarterly tax returns beginning in 2024. The financial impact is a loss of $20,000 that we were collecting from those remote business license fees. And then the bag fee is really unknown at this point. A lot of businesses are just going to no bag, so I'm not sure how much revenue we will recognize as a result of that.
Any questions from the council? Do you know who which businesses, any idea of which businesses we were collecting fees from that we would no longer be collecting fees from?
Any online retailers that we were collecting, we were collecting a sales tax fee on anyone that was remitting tax to the towns like Amazon, anybody that delivered into Timneth.
Okay, yeah, thank you. With that, do I have a motion on ordinance number 15, Series 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 and 6 of the Town of Timneth Municipal Code?
It's a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, thank you. Why don't we do that first? Melissa, thank you. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No, so I will open the public hearing at 6:13. There are no comments. Closing the public hearing at 6:13.
Thank you. Feel free to throw something at me, Lisa, if I if I miss that again. Do I have a motion, ordinance number 15, Series 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 and 6 of the Town Timneth Municipal Code?
I move to, excuse me, I move to approval ordinance number 15, Series 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 and 6 of the Town Municipal Code.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Here at number 15, ordinance number 15, Series 2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 and 6 of the Town Timneth Municipal Code. Next item, 6B, Resolution Number 57, Series 2023, a resolution approving the contract with Dietz and Davis PC for Municipal Legal Services. Aaron.
Yeah, thank you. I'll make this brief. Per council direction, we're bringing back a contract for Dietz and Davis for the town's town attorney and legal representation. I don't think there's much to add. You folks were pretty heavily involved in that process, unless you have any questions. Oh, yeah, thank you. She's, Carolyn was just pointing out that we did have an outside, not Dietz and Davis attorney review the contract. Make everything, make sure everything's on the up and up.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? I'll just add a quick comment regarding Dietz and Davis and Carolyn. She's actually been involved in a number of our town attorney searches over the years. We we searched for an attorney a couple of years ago, looking to bring our attorney services in-house. We kind of ran a parallel service, a parallel search for both in-house attorneys as well as potential firms. And Dietz and Davis was one of those firms that came highly recommended if we had chosen to go on that route at that time. And our, at the time, in-house attorney chose to employ Dietz and Davis periodically, regularly, to assist in legal services, so. And then we just ran another in-house attorney search and then decided we also wanted to consider Carolyn to to help represent the town. And so this has been a long request for proposals process that Carolyn has been through. This was not just a, they're here, so let's just go ahead and hire the, she she's proven herself over over time here. So we're excited to have you representing us. On that, do I have a motion on Resolution Number 57, Series 2023, a resolution approving the contract with Dietz and Davis PC for Municipal Legal Services?
I move to approve Resolution 57, Series 2023, a resolution approving the contract with Dietz and Davis PC for Municipal Legal Services.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The Resolution Number 57, Series 2023, a resolution approving the contract with Dietz and Davis PC for Municipal Legal Services passes unanimously. Next up, item 6C, Resolution Number 58, Series 2023, a resolution approving the vacation of a portion of the Puda River Trail easement created in the Riverbend subdivision. Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So this is the vacation of a portion of the Puda River Trail easement through the Riverbend subdivision. The owner is Timneth Lands LLC and Riverbend Car Wash LLC, and the applicant is Ridgetop Engineering. So these are the two properties that have this easement that run through it, outlined in blue, just to the northwest of us here at the town center, across Signal Tree. You can actually kind of see the trail that runs kind of down through the middle of the property, east-west and then north-south. More specifically, this is the section of trail that has the dash line through it that's being asked for this easement to be vacated. Back in 2015, Riverbend Ventures platted the Riverbend subdivision, and within the subdivision, they created a 30-foot-wide easement through the property for the purposes of constructing the Puda River Trail, which the town did back in 2015 and 2016. Then in 2021 and 2022, the Timneth Trail Apartments constructed a new segment of the Puda River Trail, which went along the old County Road 3F alignment that ran on the along the west side of the property for that ultimate new alignment for the Puda River Trail. With that, the easement for the old trail is no longer needed, as that's no longer the primary Puda River Trail location in this area. It shifts to that old 3F alignment, and then this just becomes a resident local connection trail from that standpoint for the apartments, and then the future development of the commercial to the north. The trail, the old trail itself will exist in some type of fashion. It's part of the next application at hand. There will be portions that get moved, but that general east-west trail alignment will continue to provide that connectivity to commercial development to the north and then the apartment complex to the east. Staff has reviewed this application and finds that it meets the criteria that it's no longer necessary for the public use and convenience. And as I mentioned, it's no longer needed for the ultimate alignment of the Puda River Trail with that new alignment from that standpoint. And then that is generally the main criteria that this this meets. This removing of the easement from this property has no adverse impacts. It actually relieves a couple of burdens with it, with that trail and that easement that would require the town to maintain that area. So that actually relieves the maintenance requirement, so it'd be kind of doubling up of maintenance that Public Works would have to do. And then with the new Phase 2 of the apartments, that actually added in two internal street crossings to what was the old alignment of the Puda River Trail. So we're removing this as the primary location of the Puda River Trail, actually provides for some safety enhancements by having pedestrians biking or walking not have to cross an internal street system within the apartment complex twice to then get back to the location kind of to the south, that the 3F and Stonefly intersection. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have in Planning Commission, recommended approval of this vacation at their August 15th meeting by 5-0 vote.
Do any council members have any questions for staff? I see this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody signed up for public hearing?
No, we don't have anybody signed up, but I will open the public hearing at 6:20. And having no comments, I will close the public hearing at 6:20.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on Resolution Number 58, Series 2023, a resolution approving the vacation of a portion of the Puda River Trail easement created in the Riverbend subdivision?
I move to approve Resolution Number 58, Series 2023, a resolution approving the vacation of a portion of the Puda River Trail easement created in the Riverbend subdivision.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Resolution Number 58, Series 2023, a resolution approving the vacation of a portion of the Puda River Trail easement created in the Riverbend subdivision passes unanimously. Next item, 6D, Resolution Number 59, Series 2023, a resolution approving the Riverbend subdivision's second filing, minor subdivision. Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So this is the Riverbend subdivision's second filing, minor subdivision. Once again, the owners are Timneth Lands LLC and then Riverbend Car Wash LLC. Applicant is Ridgetop Engineering. Just to kind of give a snapshot of where we're at in the process, this is the minor subdivision process, so this actually falls outside of our major subdivision, which is minor subdivisions are intended for six lots or less to be developed and per code to do a commercial minor subdivision. There has to be a final plat done on the property prior, which this property did back in 2015. They final platted all of the Riverbend subdivision, and then this is now eligible for a commercial minor subdivision per the code. So once again, these are the two lots that we are referring to for this minor subdivision, just northwest here of the town center, south of Harmony Road, and then west of Signal Tree Drive. Zoning for this is community commercial CC, which is not being requested to change at this time. So this minor subdivision application is for what was the tract 2 of the Riverbend subdivision first filing, which occurred in 2015. This application is for six lots intended for commercial developments. Those lots will range from just over one acre in size to just over four acres in size. Along with this plat, they will create an access easement for internal road connectivity that will go from the roundabout through the subdivision to the west and then then head north under that, what is, we call the covered bridge, just south of Harmony Road. And that will all be a private drive system that will be owned and maintained by the development. This subdivision also falls within the Harmony Corridor standard and was reviewed against the Harmony Corridor standard set forth in 510, Section 510 of Land Use Code. And there is an attached development structure plan in your packet, which has been reviewed by the Design Review Committee and and town staff. With that, with this subdivision, they are providing for development plaza spaces that will be developed with lots 14 and 15, when those parcels do develop out in the future, as depicted on that development structure plan. And then this development will also continue the 10-foot roadside Harmony Road Trail along each lot that is adjacent to Harmony Road when that develops as well. Staff has reviewed this against the review criteria set forth in the code. And as I mentioned, it was eligible for a minor subdivision because of the previous major subdivision through it. The zoning is meets the, the proposal meets the zoning standards, and the utility and transportation design has been reviewed by staff and the referral agencies that provide that service, and they find that they're designed to be adequate as well. Planning Commission also reviewed this application on August 15th and recommended a recommended approval by 5-0 vote. With that, we do have Alex Schuman from part of the ownership group. If you have any questions, or I'd be happy to answer any questions for you as well.
Mr. Schuman, you have anything you want to add to Kevin's presentation at this point? Okay. With that, I'll open it up to questions from council members.
A question about access to the property off off of Harmony.
Yep.
What's the what's the traffic plan there? Is that going to be right in, right out?
It is solely right in, right out.
Okay.
Yep.
So similar to what was proposed across the street on the property on the other side?
The, what other side are you talking?
The north side of Harmony there.
Where the vet hospital is.
Little bit further, further west.
Similar concept, but the spacing with this right-in, right-out was determined years ago when Harmony Road was widened, that this meets criteria for the spacing for right-in, right-out. And they're also only going with the right-in, right-out, the the one to the property to the west that you're referring to, wanted a three-quarter movement for a left turn-in. That's not the case with this one. This is strictly a right-in, right-out, and it meets the the standard and criteria, as it was a predetermined location when Harmony Road was widened.
And then what you described is the the covered bridge. Is that something that that the town has approved?
Yeah, it went through a building permit process last year as a kind of a pole barn type situation. They wanted to build that beforehand to kind of set the entry feature. And yeah, the road, internal road, will actually go underneath that bridge, we call it the non-bride bridge. It will go under that that structure.
Okay.
Yep.
And that was permanent or approved by the town?
That was that was approved by the town, and their engineered design drawings actually will will fit within that that structure.
Regarding the the bridge, is that something that will need to be changed at all for a final form? Or is this, will something need to be pulled down and put back up? I'm just curious how.
That will be up to their contractor for construction on what they would like to do. If they can't get a certain piece of equipment through there, they might have to take something down, they might not. But the road has been designed and it will work within that that space that they have. It's actually anticipated in their construction drawings for it. It's just, it'll be up to their final contractor to see if they need to, you know, remove a piece of of that structure, not to make something work for actually getting in there for paving or concrete. But that said, the developers risk.
Okay. And it's it's normal to to build that before the road, or?
It is not normal.
I'm trying to wrap my head around.
No, that that was not a normal idea. The property owner at the time, I believe, wanted to do it just to kind of set the entryway and kind of get the conversation going about it, which obviously it has done. But that is not a normal construction sequence.
Okay, okay. One question I would have about the requirement that utility and transportation design is adequate. In the packet, it reads that a traffic study was done at Plating in 2015 and that we've done further review of that traffic study. Can we can we speak to that all in terms of what that process looked like? Any concerns, changes?
Yes. So the 2015 Transportation Master Plan anticipated for commercial users within this area, within this specific 11 acres, to be at full buildout. That's what all the traffic's master plans do, is, you know, what is the ultimate buildout of the property? So with this being just a further subdivision to get to those commercial users, the traffic study that was done in 2015 is still in compliance because it anticipated those users. When each individual user does come in in the future, they have to do a traffic compliance letter against that master plan to state that their traffic is not going to generate more or have any other adverse impacts to the transportation design that or the network that they were originally anticipated for this property. So since it's just subdividing further down to get to that end user, which was originally anticipated, that's where it still meets the criteria, because it anticipated for that commercial. Each user will have to have to provide a compliance letter to show that they are meeting that original transportation master plan.
So the end users would have had to have been defined very generally?
Generally, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, with commercial traffic studies, it's a general, here's how much rough square footage of commercial and what type square footage of commercial and what types of uses would be anticipated. Typically, they like to be conservative and go higher on those numbers. That way, they don't run into any issues with exceeding, you know, the transportation, you know, the daily trips. So they be conservative, shoot high, and then typically everything kind of comes in underneath the proposed numbers.
Okay. Those are multiple high-traffic, high-intensity businesses proposed, and then there would be some, some legal hurdles that might be unable to be overcome. Okay. But then that'll be evaluated with each individual end user.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All right. On that, do I have a motion on Resolution?
Public hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a public hearing?
I will open the public hearing at 6:31. I have no one signed up. I will close the public hearing at 6:31.
Thank you, and I appreciate everybody looking out for me to make sure we get it right. Resolution, do I have a motion, a Resolution 59, Series 2023, a resolution approving the Riverbend subdivision's second filing, minor subdivision?
I move to approve Resolution Number 59, Series 2023, a resolution approving the Riverbend subdivision's second filing, minor subdivision.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution Number 59, Series 2023, a resolution approving the Riverbend subdivision's second filing, minor subdivision passes unanimously. Want to make one quick note here. I want to welcome our new Public Works Director, Justin Stone, who started with us here recently. We're excited to have him and our currently contracted Public Works Director, Don, will be working with him to get him fully up to speed. And we're excited to have you, Justin. Welcome. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.